Evening, everyone. We're starting a little bit late tonight, and I apologize for that. This is the planning board meeting for tonight. The first thing we want to do really quickly is we're very happy to have Michelle Mears as a consultant to the board, so we're very happy to have her. So for all the board members, she'll be helping us out along with Tom Clark throughout the year.
If we can just briefly, Richard, Sarah, our minute taker, you've met John and Sue sitting next to you.
All right. Next on the agenda is the continued review of the Victoria Port Point subdivision proposal. Tom, I'm going to turn to you first and ask if you have any comments about the revised documents that have been provided?
There are a couple of little things. On the open space, there's a difference of opinion as to what it should be labeled as opposed to just open space. I understand from the applicant's perspective, if it's just open space, I mean, excuse me, from the town perspective, if it's open space, it's a little ambiguous. From the applicant's perspective, if we say unbuildable, they won't be able to do anything like a gazebo for homeowners association, et cetera. So I'm suggesting that we may want to, as opposed to not to be developed, we put not a building lot in parentheses underneath the open space on the plan. So they won't be able to put a house on it, but they're going to do a gazebo or recreation facilities or something.
That was our concern, is that it was going to be, you couldn't touch it, and they may want to do little things that make it more conducive to a community feel there. But certainly, we understand it's not a building lot. So that would certainly take their part in concern.
So you're, okay. So we'll have that change made. Boy, you'll make that change.
I will.
And on sheet SP1, there was that comment.
Yeah, Tom, would you mind sharing?
I'm not quite sure what it means, because the right hand. The land development features houses, et cetera, shown on this plan are approximate and shown for planning purposes only. Plan is intended to show the feasibility and buildability of the project, does not intend to restrict the development beyond what is depicted on the subdivision plan. What does that mean?
It just means that the subdivision plan is what dictates. We're trying to demonstrate that these lots are buildable. I mean, we go to the narrative that they are. But if somebody comes in and wants to build a different house, we're restricted to the setbacks and notes that are on the subdivision plan.
So I guess then we need to determine whether or not the plan were once that removed or revised.
We tried to draw generic boxes, but if these were condos that had to be sited exactly in a certain spot, and this would be a site plan, but he showed buildable envelopes and then a sample. He took a 30 by 50 box and just showed theoretically it's going to have jogs and it's going to be maybe tilted a little bit more one way or another, but it would still meet all the rules and all the setbacks. He was just saying that these houses are examples and not meant to be specifically that shape and that exact location.
Tom, can you tell me about what sheet and what note?
Yes, it's SP1, and it's a numbered note on the right-hand side above the lot development design notes. There's not a number.
It's not numbered, right?
Right. So what if, if we would say, if we would have agreed at the first paragraph, but then you guys get rid of the second paragraph? Because that one is really what, I mean, if we said it's approximate and shown for planning purposes only, in my mind, that would be, could be interpreted as, yes, we have the house here, but it has to be a bigger house or a smaller house, or it has to be moved left or right, it still has to comply with the zoning regulations, subdivision regulations. But it's a single-family house on a single-family lot.
Yep, we have no objection to that. We're just trying to make sure you know that this, again, I thought it protected everyone that they can't come back later and say, I want a variance because my house doesn't fit, and your fallback is, no, we've got a plan that shows you can fit a house on there and we're not going to give you a variance.
Yeah, so I think if you say the house's location, I mean, what you're saying here, shown are approximate and for planning purposes only.
That covers it for us, if it covers it for you.
So of course, I didn't like to debate this myself for the first reiteration, so Tom, if you feel that our removal of the paragraph you identified, you're comfortable, then?
Yes.
Okay?
Yeah. As long as you guys agree. And I think, Michelle, I don't think we had anything else, right?
Drainage easement language.
Pork chops.
Oh, pork chops. This, I guess, I think they were identified a while ago with Jay, but Michelle mentioned that, that the subdivision regs don't allow pork chop lots. And we think 19-1 certainly is, and 19-3 is pretty close. So do you have any?
Well, I think there, I mean, there wasn't a definition of what qualifies as a pork chop lot. We tried to follow the front requirement and really, we backed into the layout based on where we wanted to build the homes, and by default, we, we, the zoning ordinance, but I guess the cluster seems to give you the flexibility to do more creative lots than on the standard subdivision. So our focus really is, we're building here and building here regardless of where our furniture is, and so we think that that's what the cluster.
And they only require 50 feet of frontage, so by default, they would all have to do something weird in order to.
So is that something we should ask for an awful waiver from the subdivision regulations to? Just one, we hadn't asked for any waivers at all.
Mr. Chairman, I think that is in the subdivision rights, right? The pork chop.
I believe it is, because I know that we encountered this years or so ago at Oldenburg Lane. I know that that was an issue.
We would have to determine that it's in the subdivision rather than zoning.
Yeah, section 914, Town of Rollinsford does not allow the creation of pork chop lots in any zone.
Could you explain what a pork chop lot looks like to me?
Well, that's a good point. I mean, if we look at it, there's one on the far right with the house way back, where it has that little stem coming off the road, and then it opens up wider, kind of resembles the pork chop. Bob is right, the term isn't defined in our ordinance or the zoning regs, so I guess it's kind of one of those.
It's just an odd term.
Yeah. This third one in looks kind of like one, but it's relatively short, and I think most pork chops, I looked at the definition online, and it just talked about a real long driveway, but it didn't say what the length of the driveway would be either, so I.
So either we have to grant a waiver or they have to go for the ZBA, right?
I don't think the zoning law, because it is.
It's not in zoning.
Okay.
It is a subdivision.
Subdivision.
So if they, applicant were to make a request to grant a waiver for, just to be safe for those two, assuming you guys would incline to grant it, I guess.
What section was it, Tom?
Section 914. General requirements for the subdivision.
And I didn't see that, I guess I did see that one, but I did read the one further back under lot shape and size, or lot shape and size regulations. And that specifically says that this is meant to trump the zoning ordinance and may be waived.
Oh, right, but we're not suggesting we go to the ZBA.
No, but I mean, it.
Where are you, it's 11 something?
11-4, lot, lot shape and size, and again, talking about the configuration of lot. These regulations carry out the intent of zoning ordinance and provide clarity and flexibility in the administration requirements of the zoning ordinance. They are not meant to supplant the zoning ordinance and may be waived in accordance with 13.3, again, relative to size and shape.
Yes.
So I think pork chop would fall into the shape category.
And I think this probably further complicates it. The ordinance goes on to say that oddly shaped lots cannot reasonably be interpreted to be an orderly layout of the land or ensure the proper description, and they're not permitted. But it doesn't define oddly shaped lots either, so I think it's consistent with the pork chop thing. But I think it would be appropriate for the applicant to petition a board for a waiver from that provision.
Okay, all right. And Sue and Richard, do you have any comments on that?
No, I don't, not at all.
Okay, all right. And Michelle, do you have any comments on the, that issue?
No, just a waiver request.
Okay, all right. It seems to me where the applicant has worked hard to create, you know, a design that you found appealing so far that that would be appropriate to, as part of the application to request a waiver for that.
Can we formally do that here and now, or is that?
It has to be a public hearing, and that particular thing is not on the agenda, that particular item. But there are also, there were drainage calculations, right? That we needed to get.
Drainage easement language.
Drainage easement language. Do we have that?
I haven't, personally haven't.
Well, we're granting these two areas here easement to the town for, for the fallback maintenance person. You have the maintenance covered in your HOA docs.
Would that be the spot where it would then normally end up, is in the HOA docs? Or is this a separate?
It would be, probably be separate, I think, yeah.
Yeah, so I definitely, it's something I would just have my attorney draw up, and I'm happy to do that.
And probably also an deed for that parcel.
Yeah. I was expecting kind of a little list of this kind of fine tuning items, conditions of approval, but it's the first I've heard of needing to do it, and so I'll definitely do it.
I thought we covered it a little bit at the last meeting.
Well, we talked about the need for drainage and drainage easement, not the language specifically.
That's what I understood. It didn't occur to me that there should be verbiage that goes along with the sketch, and now I understand, so it'd be easy to get done.
And we're still, the Wright Pierce thing went to the state. Right, but it hasn't been approved yet, as I recall.
They have no response yet. We just got Wright Pierce on Friday, and we just sent the stuff to the state today. They haven't had an opportunity to get a decision.
The fire department has weighed in that they are okay with that at this point. They'll wait to see what the state has to say about that, but they'll be ready to supply a letter as soon as we hear back from the state, assuming there are no complications with that. The engineering firm, though, did mention that it would be better to have an eight-inch main than a six-inch main.
And we did, we did make that modification.
So is that reflected in the plan? I didn't check that.
Not in these plans, because you got these on Thursday, we got them in the last.
I got to tell you, if we came to the first meeting with a six, and Ray said eight, so we changed it to an eight, and Vern told me, no, it's a six on the street, do not put a six in your road, so we changed it back to an eight, and as soon as we saw that report, we've now changed it back. So the six you're seeing was a six and an eight already. He told me it needed to go back down, and I trusted his judgment, but we did see that in the letter.
So you may have a conflict, because I think the planning board would agree with the engineering firm. The district may not, and so you're going to need district approval and state approval and planning approval, and I don't know if there's going to be a conflict if they're disagreeing on the size of the main.
The commissioner said that the engineers would take precedence. That was, you know, his opinion to drop it back to a six, but at the end of the day, Wright Pierce ran the numbers, and they, we would take their advice as well.
So they also, and Tom, correct me and Michelle if I'm wrong on this, aside from waiting for the state approval, the water district has state approval? And we're waiting for that also?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
We have our two state permits, too, by the way.
Yeah, subdivision, yes.
Is there, it wasn't, it seems to me, is there an issue about, Tom, about the ownership of the open space and whether or not, you know, the homeowners need a partial, how that, how the ownership of the open space is going to be reflected in the deeds, in the plans on the two parcels in question?
Yes, you're correct. We do need that kind of firmed up so that they don't default to the town.
Right, right, that this would be each, each landowner would own one seventh interest in the open space with the overriding homeowners association protecting it.
And that's an deed in.
I haven't made deeds yet, but if that's, I mean, again, I'm hoping for some sort of an approval, and then I take the attorney, and this is when you go in and you start to get the legal people, but if sample deeds, or just him explaining how we were going to do it, how we've done in the past, you know? But they would have, be simple of their own lot, and then one seventh interest in those two common lots.
I guess what the Ray's saying, it could be simple, but.
I don't know if it was in the HOA docs or not, I'm pretty sure it's referenced in there, but.
It's referenced in a way that I don't think was really clear, that it was a seventh interest. But I think that's important, because if an individual homeowner has every interest in maintaining, you know, an up-to-date status with the town, with the tax bill for their individual lot, but less so with the common space. So if the common space taxes were not paid, what were to happen? There's not really anything to lean there. That's really the point. So then it becomes open, non-taxable space owned by the town. We're trying to avoid that, is the point of the conversation. So if there's a seventh interest in each of those lots, then they're getting a seventh of the lien, in which case the town is more protected to be sure that those property taxes are paid.
And that was, that is the way that we intended to do it, was the one seventh interest? Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay.
Tom, Michelle, are there any other issues that we need to discuss with?
I don't think so, Mr. Chairman.
What's that?
I don't think so, sir. I think, I think they've addressed the concerns.
Okay, all right. So do any of the board members wish to ask any questions of the applicant, or Tom or Michelle?
Do you know, I think they clarified.
Okay, all right. I see we have members of the public here, and any of the public, members of the public want to comment, and if so, please identify your name and address for our reporting secretary. Looks like no takers. So given that there, I know, Mr. Brigham, you're very.
Suspended.
Very concerned about getting a, so I guess the first issue is, would you still want to make a motion to suspend the public hearing at this point?
Let's not move.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all right, all in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. All right, ayes have. All right. It would seem to me that, given that there are some outstanding issues, I know you're very, would like to move forward as quickly as possible, the biggest issue being, of course, the issue of the state and the district approval on the water issue and the issue of the main, and the issue of the noticing in regard to the waiver. I think it would be appropriate to continue this until the next, the next board meeting. How do you feel about that?
Really, I mean, our concern is just weather related, that premier approval, he's got a 30-day appeal period, that he has to sit out until the bank will release any funds to start road construction. So at this point, we're looking at beginning in November before we can get a shovel in the ground, and he's got 30 days to get pavement down.
Likely, paving, you know, paving you know is very seasonal. We're going to have, you know, the road agent's going to have a lot to say about when paving can happen, and my guess is it's not going to be this fall by the time, you know, after the November meeting, and then 30 days.
Well, that was what I pointed.
Yeah.
The other point, just because you asked, is that the two, the three things that I see, they could have easily done conditions of approval, two are water related, and I've done a lot. I've hired two different firms to do water tests, and I've been kind of begging and pushing my way through. I'm in a water district, and there's plenty of pressure for two different engineering firms. The recommendation on the letter and from the fire department is that it's adequate, and to have it, because I've done everything as fast as I could, and I hired the wrong firm, not understanding, and I went to a commissioner where they were trying to sign my letter, and now the state has something from an engineer that says it's adequate, the fire department said it's adequate, the state can take up to two weeks to issue what we, we know isn't going to be, I mean, in 99.99% sure, they're going to say, yes, that the information satisfies it. And then the shape of lots, I've always felt that a cluster subdivision was a way where we could get creative houses together and not even have, you don't even need lots at all, but the fact that it never came up until now that the shape could require this waiver, it's surprised me. But to have an approval that's contingent upon other things happen, happening, isn't really an approval. It means you have your approval of your subdivision, Michael, we need this letter from the state, and they're, you know, we're going to need this waiver request granted.
So if you recall, it was in Jay Stevens' first response to your first proposal that he found them to be pork chop lots, but since they require their own noticing of the public, wouldn't you find that if this board gave conditional approval tonight, that that rather negates the public, the value of the public opinion?
If it were contingent on that approval, then it doesn't mean anything unless that one happens. But again, that surprised me, because I wasn't expecting it. When it was just the water, I really felt like I've done everything, and that the likelihood is so strong, why hold it up? But I get your point on, on this waiver, because.
So a waiver would need to be noticed?
I think we would have asked for this waiver a while back, but we honestly thought that somewhere's in this, Jay also said he was completely wrong in a few of the things, and I got the assumption, because of stuff coming up, that when he was backing off on his lot size attack, that he, that we were, we've all seen the shapes of the lots, that we no longer, that there was no waiver needed. I think at one point, we were going to even ask, should we request a waiver? And it just didn't feel like we did. But I'm not feeling rejected. Someone asked how I felt, and so I just wanted to say that when issues get small, they can be made conditions of approval. A waiver is not, was not expected, you know, and that I get, I understand. I mean, disappointed, like you said, because of the when pavement plants close, that water letter that I've been chasing like nobody's business, and now this waiver that I didn't know about, and the chances of a subdivision for, you know, six or eight months, it's not.
That doesn't mean you can't necessarily.
I understand.
Prop the area for paving first thing in the spring, and lay water mains and other kinds of.
No, I know, it's just disappointment. It's something that, that I feel, I feel overall, we've really taken 99 out of 102 things, and these ones are common, but they're, they're out of our control.
And I appreciate you saying that, you know, we're, this is a young board, this is my first tenure as chairman. I feel a bit tenuous in, in taking steps, and I'm going to listen to the advice of, you know, our land lease administrator, and our consultant, and our town administrator, and so I'm not comfortable, you know, giving you, putting it for, finalizing it tonight, so I would entertain a motion to suspend? Continue?
You don't need to.
I don't need to make a motion, I don't need a motion. Okay, all right. Again, showing my lack of expertise and knowledge.
We are all new at this. Everybody here is, is new at this operation. I think you'll find with Rollinsford, we do the best we can with.
There's two little pieces that I just.
Volunteer government.
Get done.
And I don't ever recall seeing a waiver noticed in a, in a public notice.
Really? Oh, sure.
I've never seen a waiver.
Well, my experience is.
We ask for waivers, honestly, verbally at boards in the pad. They'll say you need three different waivers, and then they'll come and they'll, they'll vote on them, because that's their, their.
I've never read a public notice that mentions a waiver.
Well, I think perhaps.
Maybe it could be national news, maybe.
Well, I think waivers usually are included in the whole application, and then the board votes whether to grant it or deny the waiver as part of the review. I think in this particular case, maybe you're correct, that it hasn't been just a standalone item, but I still think it needs public hearing.
Maybe that's a serious decision there. I mean, as you mentioned, that was in Jay Stevens' comments, and our response was, we believe these are pork chop lots, and the comment went away, and, I mean, excuse me, we believe these are cluster lots, not pork chop lots.
I thought that's what cluster lots were, was it gave you guys the flexibility of not going with the standard zoning and the standard shape and size. The whole idea is that you put the houses where they go and where they best fit, and again, we could have changed lines, or we could have asked for the waiver, but I honestly didn't see it not coming up at a meeting before now, and it's not blaming you. The waiver on the water, I became a matter of course, not being able to get them done, and water wasn't fair, but, I mean, changing that around, and then, you know, if you're in a water district, and you need all the pressure, and the engineers and the fire department all say it's okay, but I've learned a lot, is that usually I think this must happen behind the scenes in other subdivisions. I've never had to, I've never dealt with the state directly and things like that, so we'll have to come back.
So can, can we just go through a list for me to make sure I've got everything? I've got, I've got plan revisions that would include two open space lots noting that they're not a building lot.
Correct.
And on SP1, I've got taken off the second, the second paragraph at the top there.
Right.
And those are the two plan revisions I have. And then I have, we're going to request a formal waiver to the shape of 19-3 and 19-1. We're going to revise the homeowners association to be clear about the form of ownership.
I'm going to come up with. I'm gonna come up with easement deed language, that you, and send it to you. And are we looking for more proof that the lots each own one-seventh, or is me saying it and clearing it up in the?
The HOA.
The HOA documents. So just for me, as far as legal goes, just the easement language?
And the HOA?
And the HOA one-seventh, being more clear.
And then we've got two, the two approvals that we need to get in place. One is the water district approval, and the DES water approval.
I did send an email, and copied, I think, you and Ray, and asked, what do I do next? Do I need the state? Do I need the town, in order to get the commissioner? Do I need to go to another commissioner meeting?
So, I saw that email. I don't feel like I can comment, because that's really for the district to determine how you might go about their business. But really, I would suggest that you email the commissioners, and go to their next meeting. I don't, I, that's the best I can suggest. They certainly are aware of your request and your project. So I would, I would anticipate that that would be on their agenda anyway. But they can't act outside of their meeting. So it's not likely to happen outside of...
Let's say that the state takes two weeks to send us an approval, and then, in the next two weeks, there's not a commissioners' meeting. I wouldn't have the ability to come back here with both of those. I'm assuming the state has to approve first, and then the commissioners can.
I would hope that the commissioners would wait for state approval, but I don't suppose that they really have to.
You don't know when their next meeting is?
It is on Wednesday next week.
So there's with, if they do what you hope, and wait for the state approval, there's a chance that I could miss that.
That you would be another two weeks out.
Oh, they do every two weeks.
They're on two, every two weeks, yes.
I understand that.
Yeah.
So do we, do we, I think we can keep that, keep that?
I can easily meet these conditions, you know.
But do we, do we have additional fees?
I think we have to, I think you will. We need to, we're still waiting on invoices for consults.
No, I mean, I mean for the public.
Oh, for the public noticing?
Say yes?
Yeah.
And how to avoid it?
And we need to get that in twenty days prior to the next meeting, so that it can
Yeah.
Bye, guys. You good? Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I was just gonna say, I have a suggestion for you, when you attend the water district, to, to be early. It's necessary that you sometimes have to sign, in order to talk.
Okay, yeah, I did go to one of the meetings.
Oh, okay.
They did have a sign-up sheet to talk at the last one.
It seemed like people were just kind of raising their hand, but I see, alright. So, I'm gonna talk to them ahead of time, and make sure that, they have a letter written for them. And the lawyers looked at it, I saw them. Alright, thank you, Beth.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Great, thank you. Soon as they clear out, we'll get, we'll get...
Alright.
Here we get Bob Hussman, he's on the clock.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So next on the agenda is a preliminary consultation, I believe, is that correct?
That's correct.
And members of the board, Attorney Weisskeel are presenting Mr. Phipps. And please go forward.
Good evening, I'm Chris Weisskeel, Ralph Phipps.
Can you spell your last name?
I sure can, I'm used to it. W-Y-S-K-I-E-L.
Okay. And your first name?
Chris, C-H-R-I-S. From the law firm in Dover. Weisskeel, I'm telling you, I don't know if you know how to spell that.
Oh, really?
You're good.
So I'm here with Ralph, to refresh recollection, he was before this planning board was last spring, I forget the exact dates. He was advised, oh, he was telling you then, about his plans to use his property at two Turgeon Way, one, twenty Turgeon Way, twenty Turgeon Way, I'm sorry. Just look at that, so I just screwed up, I screwed up. To build a house on it, and combine storage structure, and all windows. Before the planning board, you were then advised that it appeared to exist as a legally non-conforming lot, for which zoning relief would need to be applied for. Ralph came to see me, saying, I need a variance. And I couldn't figure out exactly why. And I was leery to suggesting apply for a variance. He had his landscaping business there for some ten years. I believe you interpret that to be a legally conforming agricultural use for the zone. I was familiar with his property, because in two thousand seventeen, I assisted him in challenging the town's assessment of the land use change tax on his property, because the town took the position that some of the disturbed areas on his land that he was using for his landscaping business diminished his overall use of the size of his lot, so that he had less than ten acres qualifying it for current use. Challenged that, wrote some letters, lots of exhibits and stuff, and the town disagreed, did not challenge. So, I interpreted that, and in correspondence, I've shared with Tom. I don't know, Tom, if you've shared everything, that we've exchanged your letter, but I have copies to share today.
I don't know about board members, but I'm here to get over that. So I'm here for two reasons, preliminary consultation. Get over the hurdle of Ralph's need to go anywhere else besides this board, to seek the development approvals for what he wants to do. I think he's probably here for site plan review only, and prefer to get over this confusion about, does he have legal status to do that, or should you proceed that way in a preliminary consult, rather than a public hearing, have a public take on tangent down the road, you explain that. Secondly, I wanted to, again, members may be different, I, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. To generally go over what the plan is. Because he's not full boat invested with an engineer who's ready to do the work. We do intend to file an application with a written request for various waivers. I'm aware of your site review regulations that require that to be in writing, and the criteria that needs to be addressed. And my guess is Adam Fogg, who is engineer, will have me write something addressing all those points, to do that. And I understand that has to be granted at a public hearing. But, but I wanted to, you know, test the winds of this board, to see if you react reasonably, or it will be, as telling if you act unreasonably, to, you know, what I would hope I recommend, would be a reasonable requested waiver. If you flat out say, no, we're not gonna be interested in that, may as well get Adam working on those type of things. So, I have a marked up section of the criteria for a site plan, I wanna sort of go over those, and weigh those, those issues. So it's best, I think, to lay out a plan, show you what we're gonna do, show the construction plans, you know, what's going on. In, in terms of existing conditions, and what use is actually going on on the site now, I was browsing through my work, when we challenged the land use change tax assessment, and realized I had Google Maps photograph, and was trying to show the town what his use is, and that's, picture's worth a thousand words, I have it, so I can refer. So, do we need to address, I mean, I'm prepared to address the, the site plan, I mean, the zoning issue.
Tom, if you don't mind, Chris, I'm gonna go to Tom, and say, Tom, look through your advice on that issue.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think part of the confusion came, was when Ralph petitioned the planning board initially. I think they may have been given inaccurate advice about the non-conformity of the particular use. But, I also think that was rendered moot by a comment made by the select board in the resolution of the appeal. The select board wrote that the decision that they had, that he, he had to pay the tax, but that was, that was the only thing reflected in the decision. It didn't affect anything else, and there was a, I should have brought the letter.
I got it, oh.
You've been reading it very much.
Because you asked me for it, I sent you copies.
This, and we can include this packet, of course, well.
Sure, I have lots of copies.
The, this is from the chair of the select board at the time, on December seventeen, December eighteen, two thousand seventeen, that the select board reviewed avatar recommendation in the meeting, has accepted the recommendation, that the land in question is no longer conformed to the requirements of current use. We want to be clear, that this relates solely to the issue of current use, the land usage on this property otherwise conformed to the town's zoning regulation. So, whoever has an opinion or not of it, it's not conforming to, I, I think this renders it moot. And, in my opinion, that because of, it is development of a non-residential tract, the site review is the only requirement, the only approval required for, for this type of application.
Okay.
I'd put a little bit of spin on that, Tom, if I may just...
Go right ahead.
I'm gonna say, the property is zone residential, agricultural. There's nothing in your zoning ordinance that I surveyed that precludes two uses on the site. So both are allowed. So, you know, my position for Ralph would be, he's got this agricultural use, it's commercial use, it's existing. It's going to change, because the house he wants to build, he's gonna live on the second floor, or on the first floor, he's gonna store equipment and everything, and neaten up the whole site of equipment, and other things he uses in his work, in his crew's work, that are now stored in like trailers, you know, things for them going back in truck, or something, dump them there, and stuff like that. So those will be removed, the storage will be internally, the structure and stuff. So that's a change of an existing commercial use that appropriately is before site review. And then he wants to do a residence, that's allowed, too. So, but I mean, it's, it's a twofer, to put that on the plan, come before, and have it approved that way. So, you know, I was scratching my head there, and of course, this summer, I'm going, variance? I don't think so, special exception, I don't think so. And I corresponded with Tom, we spoke by phone. I have copies of my email extreme, you know, basically, I was telling Tom in emails, selecting this letter he just referred to, quoting from it, and saying, the select board has got the authority to enforce zoning non-compliance issues. It did, it wrote this, certainly had the purview in challenging the land use change tax, saying, hey, what you're doing, you shouldn't be doing it all, it didn't do that, took the tax. So then, I'm thinking, of course, this summer, go to the ZBI, go out to start chinning out municipal stop arguments, stuff like that, and everything. And it was a change in the guard, here, I spoke with Caroline, and I spoke with Tom, and I saw from him a letter to just clarify his opinion as a code enforcement officer, interpreting the zoning ordinance that, we don't need zoning, really, we come here. He agreed, I have his letter, too, says that, and Tom references the select board's letter, that had that one, that sentence also. So I think, come here, only. And I wanted to sort of get that other way preliminarily. So I have copies, you know, to leave for you of this stuff.
Sure, if you don't leave a copy for the, our records, I think that Tom has explained the issue to me, and I'm, I'm happy with his explanation. I don't think the board disagrees with your intended course of action, Chris.
Good.
Yes, and I'm very sorry. Michelle, would you please, you, you any, like to put some input in on, on what's being said?
Not right now.
Okay.
This is the first she's heard of it.
Yeah, this is the first that I've heard of it, so.
Okay.
I'm gonna differ to Tom.
Okay.
But Sue and Richard, is this making sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have extra copies, that, you know, board members, yeah, needs, needs to throw them away, so whoever wants. So, give them.
No.
So, so that there's no misunderstanding, we will all get the full set of plan, and we'll go through the normal process. The only idea tonight was to make sure that the board agreed with that decision. So, Michelle will get hers, I mean, we'll all do our due diligence, et cetera, on the set of plans.
Which aren't done. So, I mean, so let's, like, what, one would be preliminary meeting, pre-meeting agenda. Let's review what Ralph's gonna do. His lot is this, the yellow, this eleven point eight acre lot, that's part of a residential subdivision that was approved, I don't know, was that done, two thousand and seven, Turgeon Way. Ends in a cul-de-sac, and Ralph's got a driveway that comes in and loops around here. Probably the best way, as they said, to show how he's now using the property, is to share a Google Maps, I'll give you a few to just practice, print that I did, yeah, at the time of land change tax issue we talked about. You know, Ralph says, yeah, it's just basically about the same thing. So by overlay, and sort of keep this the same way, that's about right, Ralph, right? So the road comes in, the cul-de-sac, the road comes in, and it's all cul-de-sac, that way. And Ralph's driveway comes in, serpentines in, and he's got this area cleared, and you can see the white squares, those are the trailer bins that he has. He's got a cleared gravel area, that, you know, his, sometimes his crew comes in, they park there for the day, take trucks out, do their landscaping business. He's got other storage stuff, he's got stuff just left outside, storage, you know, the drop plows are just stored there when you're not plowing, and you're doing summer stuff, in the winter, that stuff's there, and you got mowers, and you can elaborate. But then, if you come through this, this tree area, and you can see all these rows of material, that was the, this stuff here, these rows, those are materials, tough things, and he comes back to the site, dumps there, and they, they tell them over time, and, you know, as they move from pile to pile, they become mulch, that then take off second use. And, and, you know, not to belabor the point, but the land use change tax issue was, you know, that's part of agricultural use, doesn't qualify, shouldn't be exempted. I think the town's position will know, that's part of your commercial type use, which is, says it's not illegal, but it's disqualifying you from the ten acre minimums for land use change tax. Okay, we'll do that. So on this site, you know, none of that stuff out in the fields is changing, right, Ralph?
No.
No. So we're not expanding the use or anything like that. But, he wants to put the house, he wants to clean up this area that's exposed in gravel, and the trailer sites, and all that. You do, you're gonna cut some, a few more trees in this area, Ralph? So the house will be located back. So what Adam Fogg has already done is, do you have the approval for your septic already?
Yes.
So we did a septic plan approval. Now let me if I can sort of orient this, this way, too. North, north is this way, okay, so north, I got my north arrow sort of the same way. And the shed, that's shown on this plan, is the existing structure, which is the shed right here that I put in yellow. So, the well's gonna be in the front area, and he wants to build a house, which, I have construction plans to show you the elevations and footprint and stuff. And a septic behind it, so that's generally this area. And again, if you, if you look at the overlay, he's using this existing gravel area, minimize the cutting, and stuff like that. So he wants to build this. Ralph, I'm gonna defer to you to say, you know, these elevations, where's the front? I mean, is it, is it this way, or?
The front is basically just looking out south, to the south, in front of the, where, and the house will be where these two rect, white rectangles are. They'll be gone.
Okay.
And the septic system will be out back, we have to remove a couple more trees, not a lot. That'll be it, that's the only change.
And the house is going right here?
House is going right where those white ones.
Right, right here.
Yeah.
So you've got clearly a tree there behind that, to create a septic?
Septic, septic system is gonna go right behind it. See, it's mostly clear that there's a couple of big trees that we, that's for future issues.
So these plans, you know, you've got a, you've got a floor plan, you know, the, the ground floor space is probably going to be used for your landscaping business, and you're climbing upstairs.
This is gonna be...
To an apartment.
Well, actually, this, this part of the building is, is an apartment.
On the apartment, oh, that's right, that's right.
I'm sorry.
You know, his landscaping thing, his ground side, he's got an apartment, and you know, upstairs, and there's like a loft area, bedroom, that's the space used here, and the other... and there's like a loft area, bedroom, that space used here, the other elevation changes.
Actually, there's going to be very little elevation change. Basically, the grade, uh, that exists now is the same thing. There was a lower, behind where the house, where the house is going, there was an area that was a little bit lower than the existing ground, um, I had filled in here with gravel and I didn't fill. And that's where the septic system's going, it worked out, you know, in that, to better us, a lot less digging, so.
So the, you know, commercial or agricultural use change that's occurring is to internalize a lot of storage, neaten up the parking, get rid of the, the trailers and stuff are going away, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So in terms of size, commercial, that's not expanding, the backfields and things aren't expanding. Saying this all as a preface to my wanting to waltz into the request for waivers that I would seek be done in writing prior to the application, like if anybody blocks this section, uh, article four, one, A, of your regs. I mean, your criteria that I would probably be addressing is that, you know, you're not supposed to grant, shall not grant the waiver. And he says, unless you find, based on the evidence, will prevent that granting the waiver will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, general welfare, uh, granting the waiver shall not be opinionated board, be jurisprudence of parties, granting the waiver will not have the effect of nullifying the intended purpose of your zoning chapter and, and site review chapter regulations, um, that strict compliance would cause undue hardship to the applicant solely because of the unique physical characteristics of the site, uh, and that the board determines that granting the waiver would result in substantial benefit to the public. You know, so as I cover the areas that I'm going to focus on saying, I think we'd be requesting a waiver from, you know, I'm not going to stress all these points, but, you know, I think the public is generally benefited by the cleaning up of the site, we're getting rid of the metal storage trailers, providing adequate inside storage for his business, you know, uh, properly, uh, providing, you know, um, someone to live there too to keep, keep watch over all that stuff. There'll be a septic there, so your crews can, you know, you're going to, you have bathroom facilities on the.
We have a pool.
Now.
Yeah.
But I mean, I, on those plans, you've got a business side and then.
Crew bathroom in, in the garage part.
Okay, yeah, as well as your residential.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it was designed as a three-bedroom home, but it's only the two bedrooms. He figured that that three, third bedroom would cover for the, the bathroom in the yard.
You know, so in terms of it not being detrimental, public health, safety, whatever, I mean, the design of the state side and the approval of basically putting a structure, which could be a large house, there's going to be a small residential area in, in the component to accommodate the business use, is appropriate residential use, which is appropriate zone for, for the matter. Cleaning up the site's good, so, you know, it, I don't think it's going to injure anybody, it's not going to nullify the intent of your, your ordinance by granting the waivers that I think you're going to request. Um, what we're looking for is generally in waivers is, you know, they're very specific as to the, uh, engineering criteria that's going to be addressed for the whole site. This is almost a twelve acre site. So for example, you know, contours and, and all that stuff. Um, this use is pre-existing, it's been existing for ten years and we're not touching it. The area we're touching has been touched, it's going to be touched a little bit more. Contours are shown for the septic, had to be for the, um, septic approval from the state. You know, so, let me just run down your article three design standards, but to, to make the point, I mean, say, we don't want to, you know, we'd like to avoid the cost, frankly, of showing the topography of a twelve acre site, but most of it's not going to be affected. You know, the driveway's not changing, the parking area's not going to change, because the gravel area in front of the house, not going to be enlarged, that accommodates the trucks that'll be there now, the trucks leave, and the cars, you know, people that come to work park there, it's, it's just an even swamp sort of. A lot of the equipment's going to be stored inside now, some of the bigger stuff is to be outside, right, mowers and tractors and whatever, they are now, not changing. So, you know, for existing site conditions, um, you know, like, it could be a sheet of existing conditions, like to show that generally are referred to a picture, you know, and not having to plot with certainty, you know, where, where trailers that are going to be removed anyways are going to be. But I think most of these things can be addressed. Um, we'd like to seek a waiver to avoid having a HIS, a high intensity soil, soil survey for the entire site or portion determined by the board. Septic approval, I think, protects those features of, that NHGES approval for septic design seeks to protect and doing a further HIS is, I would assert, unnecessary for existing landscaping slash, um, agriculture use that's been existing for ten years in which the select board's letter and Tom's saying, you know, it's okay, yes.
I just, if you, if I may.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to address your point though.
Sure.
While there was a letter from the select board.
Yep.
Acknowledging that, or, or stating that there was no zoning issue, it doesn't seem as though, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Phipps, that the business ever went before planning for site review. So while the use itself, I think the board so far, the, you know, is acquiesced, will be acceptable for purposes of, you know, not needing to go through zoning and adhered planning, um, the business use itself, in its footprint and its design and layout and, you know, the use of that property, like, I don't think ever went through planning, so, you know, probably ought to in this process.
So.
You know.
I don't disagree with your statement. The issue is, to what degree of process should Ralph be submitted to? For, for example, Caroline, if, if he said, well, let's with certainty, show me where every, uh, row of the, um, mulch and the process of being built or, or done.
Right.
So it's going to become the planning board, so that your review process can say, you can't do that anymore? I mean, then you're going to get me, you know, getting back up and saying, oh, no, that opportunity should have been raised two years ago in that process, I don't think you can.
Well, I, I, I get your point. You know, the board at the time, the select board at the time was, was addressing the current use issue.
Agreed.
And was specifically not addressing a zoning issue.
Agreed.
But if something's coming before planning, then I think it would be due diligence of this board to address everything within its purview. So it's not coming before this board, but if it's going to come through this board, it's just an open question, really, I guess, for our.
So, so, so my point is, I, I understand that, I don't disagree with you.
I don't know to what extent. I mean, that, I think I would ask Tom Clark and Michelle about.
Yeah, so before he answers, if I can, I might say, okay. I don't disagree. You know, I, I don't disagree with your assertion that the planning board, uh, in ruling on a land use change tax, it wasn't making definitive zoning determination.
Yes.
That's why I conversed and corresponded with your code enforcement officer, who at the threshold level is the party responsible to make a zoning interpretation. And that's why I requested his letter, which is given me, to say, you don't have to go to the ZBI or whatever, this is a use that can continue. Let's put on the shelf or beg for the moment, whether it's agriculturally legal or simply an issue that town doesn't want to see, the municipal stopple to stop the change. But if I submit myself and open myself up to the planning board process to full purview, so Ralph's got to show everything with the engineering detail and task that this site review regs says, what are you going to do? Tell him that he can't do something he's been doing for ten years? Because then his lawyer's going to say, no, they can't do that to you. So if you can't, that can't be done to you, I'm saying, why does he have to go through the expense of showing all that engineering data for the whole topic?
I'm not necessarily disagreeing with you, I just think it's a conversation that this board has to acknowledge and have to come itself to that determination, if it will.
I, I think, you're both right, but, um, if we were to imagine for a moment that this was a vacant lot, and Ralph, the possession is particularly used with all the existing features, you would, you would have to come before the board with all of them on the plan.
If it was not previously used for anything, it's vacant lot?
Yes.
Agreed.
So I think what Caroline is saying is that, I mean, the Google thing is good, but maybe a little higher level of detail, um, just to be sure that it complies with the site review rights, not just the building that Ralph is building, uh, or the septic, but, but frankly, I'm not sure.
I think there's a high, like, I think there's a happy medium between the full extensive detail and the, he's just building a house. You know, like, is there adequate parking for all the employees? I think this board has some responsibility to address some basic needs and uses of that function to make sure that it's safe and appropriate. Not that, to say that he would be, you know, have to discontinue the use or limit certain areas necessarily, but that certain minimum standards are getting evaluated.
So I don't disagree with that. And I think Adam can certainly depict, you know, dimension on the area. This area that's cleared and the additional area that has to be cleared, you know, it's, and it's, the TOPOS are shown on this plan already to that extent. But I'm, I don't think, you know, it's reasonable to require the whole site and TOPOS for the whole site to be done, or HIS to be done for the high intensity soil survey, to be done for the whole site. Because if, if, if it were a vacant lot, you know, never touched, and he's going to say, I'm going to do all this stuff. I think you have as a planning purview, a shot to say, all right, let's see if you can do it. He's doing it, he's done it for ten years. And if you take the step to say, mm, now we're going to pull you back and say you've got to do less, just because he submits himself to planning, I'll contest that, and say he doesn't, if we don't have to do that, I'm just saying, don't make him spend the money to do, you know, all the engineering for the whole thing. His lighting is probably going to be just on the structure. So Adam can show, you know, your site says, what kind of lighting is it going to have? What kind of luminance or where's it going to be pointing? You can show that stuff, but do we have to do an entire separate lighting plan, like if you got a commercial site, you know, with all the lumens and all those little dot lines and all the little data and stuff like that? I think that, you know, he's not doing that, so I think that would be excessive. He can show, and, and, you know, when he comes in, the presentation will say, some employees that come, some of the cars come and all that stuff. And Adam's plan should certainly show, they're not parking on top of each other, you know, and that there's enough room. I, I don't disagree with that. But, um, you know, stormwater drainage study and all that stuff, I say, I don't think that's necessary, because the only extent of new development really is in the nature of a house and a septic that's allowed for the zone. You wouldn't have that done for residential. There's two uses here, you know? Um, certainly you don't want to, I opened myself up, say, well, you've got approved drainage for the back portion of the lot, he's been using it for ten, the past ten years, it's done. And, you know.
To get back to your question about, I came to the town after I bought this land and said, what do I need to do?
I, okay, so I'm, I don't know that, you know, so I asked you for that, you know?
I was told nothing. I mean, and I was putting the driveway in, she's, oh, hey, go ahead and do it. That's what I was told, and I didn't. I, I wasn't told I had to come to another planning board to open a landscape business right?
Do I dare ask who told you that?
I'd rather not say, but, uh, we all know who she is. And, I mean, it was different back then, I understand, but.
So what about, what about, excuse me, Chris, what about if, um, the planning board were to appoint a subcommittee of Caroline, Michelle and myself, we could meet with Ralph and Chris, go through this stuff? Because I, I see what he's saying, I mean, the, the mulch piles.
I can too.
Yeah, the mulch piles, I mean, that's where they are and that's where they're going to stay. So maybe depict them, you know, in a, in a locust plan. Um, be more specific with the development site, septic, but then the subcommittee can make a determination as to what needs to be on the plan. Because I understand his concern, you know, surveying a twelve acre lot for, you know.
Adam's going to, Adam's going to like, use this survey and superimpose this stuff on it.
Oh, oh, yeah, so.
So it's not like we're not going to show general locations and things. But I, and, but I was searching and trying to test the waters for that happy medium too, Caroline, and say, no, you're not going to let him do a napkin thing, you know? But, um, so here's the conversation I had with Adam, if you start the plan, well, what do I got to do? I said, well, let me do a permanent consult and try to see, you know, I understand nothing you say is binding because it's got to be a public hearing, but we're going to come in requesting specific things. I don't want to have this conversation from the get-go and you saying, you want to find a happy medium, we're getting somewhere. I still want to, you know, travel, not too dear, too late, some of the other buggies that are very expensive and detailing that Adam's saying, you know, God, Ralph's going to have to open his checkbook for all this stuff. And I'm thinking, why? Most of this is a pre, pre-stick use that's been here for a decade, we're not touching. We're touching this area, let's focus on that and present, and prove to you that that area is adequate for what he's doing, there's enough parking and storage and stuff like that. You can show that probably just by dimensioning, you know?
So, um, I personally like the idea of a subcommittee. I'd like to ask two questions that I've, I wanted to ask. One is, Chris, you, in your presentation before, early tonight, you referenced the word apartment, which I tend to look, think of as a commercial enterprise. I don't think you're suggesting that, okay.
It's a residence.
Second thing is.
It's a house.
All right.
Yeah.
Second thing is, that occurred to me as I'm listening, and, and Tom, you can tell me if this is something you worry about or not. So we're talking about a, a, a use of, a business use that really wasn't approved according to the correct process. Let's say that three years from now, Mr. Phipps says, I want to expand the, my business. Do we have to address the scope of the current business, or do we not have to worry about that?
I think, um, Mr. Chairman, it would depend on the nature of the expansion. If it's within the twelve acres, I think it's entirely under the purview of the planning board. I think if you were to acquire additional acreage, then we come back to the question of the use and whether or not it should be expanded or could be expanded. But, um, I think if it's within the boundaries of the twelve acres, it's, we're not expanding the use, we may be improving it or enhancing it, um, this building, but I don't.
And if we're to ask our questions, I don't, I don't, I'm inclined to grant the kind of waivers that, be in favor of granting the kind of waivers that Chris is asking for, but if, in terms of the specificity of this.
Yeah.
Not drawn on a napkin, but not, you know, these expensive things, do we need to consider that for measuring an expansion in the future?
I think if, if Mr. Phipps were to come back after this and say, now I want to do this, clearly it would fall under the site review regs. So you, you wouldn't have to come back.
Okay. Do you have any comment on that, Michelle?
Um, I'm just guessing that there's going to be quite a few waiver requests.
Yes. I've got a lot ready to carry.
Between residential and commercial uses, um, I don't, I haven't looked at the site plan, but, um, I'm just guessing.
We don't have a site plan.
Yeah, all right, yeah, yeah. So, um, I guess that's what you need to flesh out.
Right. So, you know, lighting, I mean, I think he's going to show certain lighting and stuff on the house, he's not going to have lamp poles and stuff like that. I mean, you've got, you know, I could go through this and, um, you know, all commercial driveways should be paved with the tombstone concrete, we don't want to hire anything up there, right? You know, no, and, and I think that would be kind of what you prefer. Um, and then we get into, was it commercials, I'm just sorry, I'll sort of say, you know, I mean, I don't, but I mean, I don't want to set a trap for myself in my application saying I haven't specifically cited a permit, so it's got to be a bit of a laundry list. So, you know, if you're having subcommittees, I can say, I'm going to do this, and we try not to overlook something, you know? That might be good, and so we unleash Adam to do what's reasonable and not crazy. Storm drainage, I mean, I, you know, I'm really thinking, the site is what it is, it's sort of a pancake full of gravel in the area where it's developed, and I'm thinking, I really would seek a waiver for that, otherwise you, you know, uh, you're going to have to accommodate, um, you know, two, ten, twenty-five and a hundred year storm events and stuff. So, you know, you know, I think that's a reasonable request to seek a waiver for, for limiting this in this area. And a, a specific landscaping plan, I think it'll show the general, you know, tree coverage and, as a general area, but the, the site is so huge, Ralph, the area, it's, it's buffered in its natural, so I won't come up with a landscaping plan or, or an arborist or something.
I would think that would be something that, you know, you've kind of enhanced this.
Yeah. I can find a way to do, yeah. And we can, we can take some photographs too, and, and sort of memorialize, if the chairman's concerned is, I get your point, John, it's, it's like, you know, because there's like, small degrees of expansion, where there's a body case law, he says, you got some right, but I mean, you guys have, even if he's going to throw up another structure, that's site plan stuff again, I get that. So without doing a lot of engineering expense, you know, creatively, we could just say, use a picture, just in use of the things and say, so, so from an enforcement perspective, you got something in a file, you go out, you know, suddenly the whole rose, you know, You, you know, Ralph, what do you, you know, what's up with that? You know, you've got a sort of a benchmark. But frankly, he's looking not to create a huge engineering bill, you know? Those are the big ones.
So do we need to have a formal motion in terms of appointing a subcommittee or?
I don't know the things, I mean, this is just a preliminary meeting anyway. And I think, I think if it's at the board's pleasure that.
Okay.
I think it would just.
I think a lot of things will be resolved.
Easily. So who would be my point person? You. All right.
We'll organize it and figure it out.
Thank you. That way we can give Adam some clear direction. Try to make the board happy, maybe even the town administrator. And get there, you know, without without, I I think that's a reasonable thing to do. Okay.
All right. Thank you for those, Chris, Tom.
Thank you. Do you have anything else that you need to add?
Minutes.
That's it?
Can I just take a moment? You approved a plan, a boundary line adjustment plan in September for Norman Wanda Gagnon?
Yes, and there was a question about that by the tax collector, who is the one who files plans on behalf of this body. I don't know, you you, they were signed by Mr. Hensman. The.
Plans aren't signed yet.
Not not plans.
So so anyways, I mean, when Norway played with Joel Reynolds, when he, Joel called me up. I'm doing the deed work for the Gagnon, so they do a boundary swap. It's actually become a swap. Before it was just a big, was a three quarters of an acre or something. It was a rare going from Norm's aunt to him and his wife, the size of a parcel. When Norway planes went out to set the pins for the line, they found a fence was encroaching. Let me open this up. Show you. Do you mind if I knock off five minutes of the two per year schedule?
No, good.
You're off my clock.
That's all I was worried about.
I know you were. So this chunk, you know, went from this lot to this and expands here. Chris, do the deeds. Right? When Norway planes went to set these two pins to establish the new lines, they found that Maureen's back fence crosses, you know, what became the new precisely located common boundary line. They said, I would rather not move the fence. So Joel said, well, I can just shoot a different line. So we got the plan, we got these two lines on top of each other. We said, Joel, what have you done? So he embellished the plan with these two enlargements. What they prefer to do is just get 91 square feet of this property to here so that it comes over there. And it's not a crazy stupid jogged line. It's just that the new common boundary line is set on the same course that moves 91 feet over this way. So so I have draft deeds because Joel was under the impression that he wanted to see some draft deeds to accomplish this before a plan was signed off. So I have deed from this to this and this to this, but it's just a little sliver in this plan to review. Joel said he spoke with you, not to put you on our, on our, Michelle, you know, so it's sort of, in some way, but you haven't seen the thing. So I I said, well, we're making progress. I'm not ready to execute any deeds because this property is in trust ownership and I think.
That's the hand.
And I think Michael, her son, is a successor trustee, but I don't know. And, you know, before he signs a deed, I have to satisfy myself that he's got the authority to sign a deed, which means show me a trust certificate of the trust and stuff.
But my point was that I don't believe it's been filed because of the trust ownership. Who's the right signature on the applica-, something like that.
So the application may have to be amended as well?
Not that the application necessarily. I I would have you call the tax collector.
I will.
You know, because she could tell you more precisely, like, she wasn't, I I think she needs the trust documents to prove that whoever's signing is the person who really owns.
So do I, to have a deed, yeah, technically record a deed, but I don't know that. So so we'll figure that out. But I thought, I was under the impression from John that you needed draft deed copies too, so I have those. You leave them with you, you or you, whoever, if you want, if you don't, or revise the plan. Joel was under the impression, it's approved enough, you don't need to come back. I don't know. I was in careless mode, but I'm making progress. Thank you for indulging the two persons. You also? Yeah. Good to go. Is that you, a couple of copies I'll leave to, okay? Keep the good places.
So that must need to be signed off on again, whatever it was used in for paperwork is probably not accurate with hatred, if ever so slightly.
Yeah, the plan that was approved is different than the one you're suggesting.
Yep, that's my understanding.
Because you got these little circles and the little bulletoff.
Yeah.
So, you know, they have to come before the board again.
I don't think so. I mean, it hasn't been approved. It's being changed.
Not guarantee with you. I'd like to not come before you, but I don't know. I, yeah, I. Does that have to be noticed? There's a minor, there's a minor lot line adjustment.
It's mine, wasn't it? Minor lot line adjustment.
Minor lot line adjustment. Because the alternative turn is leave it there, do the deeds differently, and then ease it for the fence, and the fence will move eventually. I mean, it doesn't have to be fixed. So so I think the applicant could be at a fork in the road, have an option, say, no, do something pursuant to the approved plan. You know, the fence as an encumbrance can be forgiven by an easement from Norman Wanda to the party giving a chunk of land to say, you know, until until you replace the fence, be there with this easement right. And that's not in the purview of the planning board that satisfies title.
That would certainly be easier, yeah.
I can take that message back and and not need.
And less expensive if it doesn't require, like, time and noticing and.
Well, I'm thinking if it's a minor lot line adjustment and it's a minor amendment to that, then it could come back to the planning board under old business, which wouldn't have to be noticed. And we're just moving a line.
The only thing is that the public plan was closed. It wasn't suspended, it was closed. So you would have to renotice to take public comments.
I stand corrected. I get it. Why don't I present the option and see what they want to do? If I was told differently, but I get it.
Chris, did you have a second?
Thank you.
Are we next to the chairman's panel of minutes?
So we have two. We have from August and from September 10.
Do we need to, the motion need to be separate for each one or can we do a motion for both?
I think I can do one for both.
Okay, all right, so.
Make a motion to accept raises.
All right, great, so a second?
A second.
All right, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Great, good, unanimous. That's, so the next would be an entertaining motion to.
Oh, hold on, one second.
Is there any card, please? Oh.
Good question, no, there's not.
I am not going to be here for the next scheduled meeting. I'm in San Francisco, so.
Let's change your plans.
Yeah. In fact, I'm going to be in Napa, so no, I'm not changing my plans.
So, although it's irregular to say so, I would, maybe it's not regular to say so, I'm wondering if the planning board would entertain moving the minute, the the meeting.
The date?
Just so that we can have consistency.
I think that'd be an excellent, that's an excellent idea.
Projects.
You're going to be back in a week?
I'll be back the eighth, so you could have, you could have your meeting just a week later on the 12th. I'll be here.
And actually, no, it might even help out the other applicant, the first applicant, right, in terms of the.
Getting stuff in order.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So I, all right, so do we have to have to do a four motion about that or can we just say we do? Okay, so the motion would be that the date would be, forgive me for asking, November 8?
November.
12th. 12th?
Is that what you said? Chris, when you said?
Yes, I know. Uh, December 1st.
Don't make a motion to, I think it's chairman, I can't make.
No, I'll make a motion.
Well.
Oh.
We're going to have another conflict.
It's, excuse me a second, the calendar, so November.
12th would be the second Tuesday. Are you good?
Sure.
Well, no, hold on, you're saying that reluctantly, I mean, do we have to, is it the day of the week that's the problem or the week itself?
Um, the day of the week. I'm on the planning board Dover and that's Dover planning board meeting.
So is there, is there a reason why we can't have a meeting on a Wednesday as opposed to Tuesday?
We could totally do that.
So why not, why not do that?
Hold the phone before we do that. What day, what what Wednesday is that?
That's the 13th.
13th.
13th. It's the second Wednesday.
It's this, that meeting is the 14th, that board meeting.
You getting a notice? You know what the conflict is on Wednesday?
I'm just looking at everything. So there's a budget committee on the November 13th.
Budget committee.
So that means we could, okay.
So that's the 13th, oh, because you're annoying.
Does the board have a meeting on the Monday? Or is that their off week?
Well, it's Veterans Day. So alternatively, Tom, how would you feel about relinquishing your spot to Michelle? Are you available for the 12th?
That works for me if it works.
Yeah, that's fine.
Oh.
Yeah.
All right, so just before we do that, before we do that, no offense to Michelle, I'd like to have the benefit of both of you when that first part come back. Can we do the 14th? We can't do the 14th, is that right?
Does the Select Board budget committee?
Not on the 14th.
What does that mean?
October 17th. So November 14th is fine.
So I would prefer to have the combined.
Thursday, November.
Experience and knowledge of both Michelle and Tom. So I would have it suggested we do it on November 14th, the Thursday at 7:00.
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, great, great.
Yep, that's fine, let me.
So the 14th.
Thank you for the accommodation.
Thursday the 14th.
Okay, good, thank you. Could you send out an email to the whole board so that those who are not here know that?
Absolutely. So does someone have a first, that motion?
What's that?
I will, I will move that we move the next meeting to November 14th, so.
Okay, just a second, okay. All favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hands in the eyes, have it.
Could you also let the people who are here tonight, the applicants, know as well?
That's right.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
So is there any further?
We have to post it too because that hearing is still open.
Yes.
It's still ongoing, so I'll do a notice too.
Great, great, fantastic.
So, motion over. Anybody first?
Want to make a motion to the chairman?
All right, awesome.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, great. Thank you very much everyone for your patience tonight and assistance and help.
We're gaining on it, I'm gaining some.
Yeah, yeah, it takes time to. I was curious about going to, like, Dover, a larger planning board also, just to.
Are you meeting in sight?
To see it. And again, there was always like a conflict. You can watch them online.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can go to the city Dover website, they have free videos posted so you're able to watch old ones.
Oh, good.
Probably don't get Channel 22 at all.
Well.